Welcome everybody to the town panel select board meeting. Um, October 24th at 6:05. Sorry, we're a little late. Um, call to order. Board member roll call Angie Rollin.
Carl Stromeyer, Jamie Percy.
Mike?
Mike, are you there?
Uh, yeah, I am now. I just got unmuted. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Mike, are you chairing or would you like me to chair?
No, I can chair and I'm in there now.
Okay, y'all set?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, Hannah, take it over.
Um. Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes. Lawrence, Bennington County Sheriff's Department Mutual Aid Discussion. Hometown Heroes Presentation, Williams College Consulting Group. Harper Discussion, Town Offices Flagpole. Um. Laptop Purchase Discussion, Possible Action. Town Offices Cleaning and Maintenance Discussion, Impossible Action. BCRC Mapping Services. Estimate, uh, Discussion, Action, Possible Action. Public Comment Adjourned. We need to add BCRC Request to Use the Space For Center Street Residents Open House and Allen's Treasury Hours Are Attached.
And we remove the hiring policy. That's why I skipped 13.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a date for the BCRC?
What? Where are you putting it?
Where are you putting the mic?
Um. Well, let's put it down. It was 16A.
Okay. Make the motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Hang on a second, guys. All of them in favor? I almost have a second. All of them in favor? There's no roll call.
Let's do roll call because.
Oh, I thought we did roll call.
I mean.
Yeah, but when you vote, when you vote because.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We gotta, we gotta, Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Uh, Morrison carries. Uh, public comment. Any public comment, Hannah?
Jim Cossis.
Hello, people. Jim Cossis, North Mason Hill Road. Hey, I got that right this tonight. Um, first of all, I just want to repeat last, uh, what I said last week that the discussion about the, um, transfer station was just excellent. I mean, um, what was happening around town before any discussions were happening, um, really made a little more sense. Um, and I, I appreciate now, um, seeing on the agenda that tonight is going to be, um, a little discussion with the sheriff's department. Um, I know there's, um, been a, uh, a sour, um, taste in someone's mouth about how much we're spending for the, um, sheriff's department. And, um, I just want to make sure that, I mean, it's great to have these discussions before any, um, illogical remarks are made or, um, illogical decisions are made. And two of them that come into mind is, um, um, someone saying that we're not gonna, I'm not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on the sheriffs to patrol Pownell itself. They kind of just put a bad taste in my mouth of, uh, how much would someone spend? Um, it's not that person that's spending the money. It's the town that's spending the money. And, um, basically the hundred thousand is a, a small amount on everyone's tax bill. Um, an example I gave with the transfer station that the, um, the amount of eighty thousand that's not being paid or that's kind of off the balance of the, um, revenues and expenses. It's only fifteen dollars on someone's tax bill that's living in a house value that two hundred thousand. So, um, basically, um, the other remark was basically, um, having to put the transfer station and the sheriff's department on a ballot article, um, to see if it needs to be closed. I think these are remarks that don't need to be made at a rational, irrational way and that, um, I want to quote a guy that, a gentleman that up in Shasbury, when they're having a little episode up there about the school district, um, his one comment was, we need to have discussions before decisions. And I'm sure you guys have had a lot of discussions, but I think also some of these remarks that happen, uh, we need to have a little more discussion before we make these illogical remarks. Um, the last thing I wanted to just say is that I, I really appreciate you guys doing what you're doing to try to hold down costs. Um, people are complaining about the taxes being too high. Um, you'll never, it's happening all around the whole state. Um, but the problem is that town taxes are really not that high. I mean, yes, they're up there, but depending on the value of your house, um, that you purchased and expenses that you have to do, insurance and oil and heating and everything like that, compared to the tax bill that is by the town, um, I don't think it's bad. I mean, maybe there's a little few people that think it might be bad, but, um, I guess the problem comes is everyone's looking at their tax bill and they're seeing the school district and the town, but they're not really seeing the school district and the town. They're just seeing a bottom line amount that they're paying. And so what I. Okay. What I'd like to see if you guys can between now and maybe next year, see if there's a way we can send out two tax bills. One tax bill that is, uh, basically the school tax bill and one tax bill that is the town. And I think people would understand a little bit better what they're spending for each. Thank you very much and thanks, Mike. Bye.
Any more public comment, Hannah?
All their hands out.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, uh, October 10th, 2024.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion, any corrections? Comments? All those in favor, roll call please.
Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Lawrence, county's payable October 18th, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. County's payable October 25th, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, corrections?
None.
All those in favor?
Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Payroll October 18th, eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven, or thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Amy Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Payroll October 25th, twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Carl Stromeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Uh, let's, can we add Allen's hours underneath this, Lawrence, please?
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I don't have it. It's my, my packet's a little screwy because I'm, I just, you know, I dropped off a bunch of paper copies. I'm sorry. I apologize. Actually, I got it.
Okay, it was in order when you picked it up.
Yep, yep, no. Thank you. I apologize. I was going, I'm working off my own laptop and not my town one and whatever, so. Twenty-fourth for 2024 tax selection. October 21th through the 30th, eight to three thirty. October 31st, eight a.m. to 12:00 p.m. November 1st, eight to four. November 4th through November 8th, eight to four. November 8th taxes are due, eight to five. Taxes must be paid by 5:00 p.m. at, uh, November 8th in person or online or postmarked by November 8th to be considered on time. Anything that's after 5:00 p.m. or postmarked after November 8th will be considered delinquent. Turning the cash, please have the correct change. Thank you, Ellen Stromeyer.
Mike, can I just ask a question to the public because you're coming across muffled here. We're having a really hard time hearing you. I just want to make sure the public can hear you.
Who, me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mike, you're too close.
I'm doing my best, Mike.
No, I know you're doing your best.
We, we appreciate that.
Will you see if anybody can raise their hand that he's muffled?
We posted with the minutes also, correct, Eric?
He's muffled.
Yeah, you can't hear it. You can't hear it?
It's, it's muffled.
Okay.
Okay, but anyways.
Hi, sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
Sheriff's Department Mutual Aid Discussion. Do you have anybody to say anything?
Yes, they are here.
And the state police.
You ready for them to take over?
You draw straws and see who goes first.
Come on up.
Where would you go?
Wherever.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Yeah, right.
There you go.
I can stand. I'm, I'm more answer-y than anything else here today to answer questions.
Just be careful. If you do get up out of those chairs, they have a tendency of blowing away. So turn around, make sure they're behind you before you sit back down.
Thank you very much, uh, select board. Um, and people of Pownell for allowing us to be here today, speaking for you. Um, we are here to have the discussion, um, regarding the mutual aid agreement that was established between the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, the town of Williamstown, um, Massachusetts. So what I will do is, speak a little louder. What I will, what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to defer to my Director of Administration, uh, Director of Vanowitz, because it was Peter, um, who put all of this together. So he did a great job and, uh, here's Peter. Thank you.
So, these are very commonplace amongst law enforcement agencies. Very commonplace, fire departments, rescue squads, maybe even highway departments. I'm not really sure. Um, when I came on and started working for the sheriff, I saw that there was a need for to give me.
Bless.
The Williamstown Police Department to be available to help our people out in the event that the state police were all tied up in Dorset or something like that. It was not a reasonable response time. Our concern was for, you know, the citizens of Pownell and our employees. So with the help of Chief Zimba, um, we drafted this mutual memo of understanding. It took us about a year to get it done, but, um, it, it's in place. Uh, by statute, we're allowed to do that. There's no added cost to the town of Pownell. Um, you all have a copy of the, uh, memo of understanding in the statute. So it's pretty cut and dry. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to address it.
What are the hours?
Well, so.
The hours of what?
No, that's not. I think.
It's, it's an emergency basis, the way I understood it.
So if you have a, if you have.
It's at midnight and the ambulance has a call and they need help and the sheriff's getting.
No, i- if you have, if you have, um, um, a, a, a critical incident, for an example, let's just say at the, um, the Southern Vermont Medical Center Pownell campus or Stewart's or something where it's a, it, I mean, this is an above and beyond critical moment where, um, we have one deputy, deputy legacy that may be in the town of Pownell. Um, and our closest backup would be the state police and/or others surrounding agencies, but it takes time to get there. Right across the border is Williamstown Police Department. So, um, now this, this mutual aid agreement, um, is there for a oh snap moment where we can work collaboratively together, but it's, it's not only Williamstown here. Um, it's also us for there. So it's, this is a mutual agreement, so.
I understand that, but it's a 24-hour thing.
Yes.
Ho- hold on a minute.
That's not for standing.
The memo of understanding, the only people that can call for mutual aid is the sheriff in this county and the chief of police in Williamstown. So if there was a significant incident, it would be up to the sheriff that would request mutual aid from Williamstown. Or if there was a significant incident in Williamstown, they could request here the chief of police. So there's no set hours or anything like that. This is if we need help and we need it quickly.
Right.
We can get it.
I mean, this is a, this is a this is a fantastic, uh, uh, design put in place by Director Vanowitz and working with Chief Zimba and, and spending over a year's time and putting this together and working with their town governance and so forth. This is really impressive for the people of Pownell. So, um, it's, 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 and it's also impressive for not only us, but to work collaboratively with the Vermont State Police where we have those mutual partnerships. It's very important and that didn't exist. So.
Do you have an agreement with the sheriff or the state police? Now, you can call for mutual aid to Williamstown. You're not on call. Uh, we've got a trooper down at Stewart's. How does that work for the trooper to get a response from Williamstown? Does he do?
Best lieutenant.
There you go. I guess that's the easiest way to.
And, and I think the easiest way is, is if we frame this up into a critical incident and, and I understand where we live, uh, it's a rural area and you look at the news and you have these critical incidents like natural disasters or, uh, you know, let's say an active shooter, and I know that's on everyone's forefront in, in our country today. That type of stuff can happen for me calling the chief and him sending resources or a chief sending resources. So yes, I, I could call there and I would assume.
You can call down there and get them to send a one of their cop, one of their officers across the line. Do you need to contact Sheriff Gully? For Sheriff Gully to contact them, because that's the way it's sounding to me. That's, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Bob.
Now, thi- go on.
No, no, go ahead.
This is, this mutual aid agreement that Director Vanowitz institutionalized is a relationship building event between the sheriff's department and Williamstown.
Right, correct.
Where, but if Lieutenant Coop were to need help, let's just say you have, um, an active shooter at, um, new establishment in the town of Pownell. And we need to send, um, law enforcement there in a, in a hurry in order to, uh, stop the threat. Um, then phone calls will be made to, whether it's by me here, whether it's by Lieutenant Coop, uh, to Williamstown Police Department, see if they can come and help.
Can he call Williamstown PD?
Sure.
Yes, okay. And request in accordance, accordance to this, because I just, the way you explained it a minute ago, you were the only one that could request that support from the town of Williamstown.
No, I, I think, I think where this, I think what was meant, or correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is not for you to call Williamstown and have them come here. This is an agreement. This is a respectful conversation that we're having with you that I, this is not a permission granted by the select board for me to do this. This is my authority as the sheriff of the county to do this. So that's where this is going.
The next question I'll have for you is, you're not patrolling. You get a request from Williamstown PD to help them down there. Will we be charged for that request?
No.
Okay. All I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
So we're in the agreement, sir.
Right. But it's easier for me to, if you guys explain it to me rather than to try to go through all of it.
And it's, it's, it's no different if, if we've got, um, if we've got an incident, um, in Bennington or North Bennington and, and we have to send units, we, we, um, notify our dispatch. We let them know that we are stopping or canceling our time or our contract and we are taking over. Now, when we do take over in a community, let's just say that we do not have a contract with, that's on our own dime.
Okay. All good. Mike, do you have anything?
No, no, I, I don't have anything at all. James, it sounds like, um, it sounds like this is, um, you know, something if, if your officers are in Pownell and need assistance, then you have an agreement in place to be able to call for that assistance. Um, it's pretty straightforward from, from what I gather here. Um, and, uh, there, as far as the state police go, they're totally separate from, if, if the VSP calls for, um, assistance from Williamstown, that's VSP calling and not, that's separate from your agreement with, with Williamstown Police Department. Is that? That's the only thing I have a question on.
Correct. State to state.
And, and we have other resources to include the New York State Police. I, I've worked in border towns all over our state and in times of crisis, you know, MOUs are nice, but in times of crisis, you know, commander to chief or incident commander to whoever we're requesting those resources for, that can happen on the phone. This is just the framework that allows us to have a better understanding as we move forward with that process rather than it being willy-nilly in the moment. Um, but yeah, I, I sent troopers to New York State, uh, early last year. Uh, we, we have troopers in North Carolina right now during a natural disaster. Um, so these things are commonplace in law enforcement, fire, as Director Vanowitz said earlier. So, um, this is just more formalized what, uh, the sheriff's department's worked on.
No problem.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. And, and, and please know, I mean, this is an opportunity for us to establish something that, that we, we, we didn't have, uh, institutionalized, uh, as a sheriff's department and, you know, we're, we're, we're trying our best to collaborate, share our resources, but think, um, you know, uh, in a manner where if there is indeed a critical incident, um, we can, um, properly address it, but also, um, you know, be safe doing so.
Oh. So.
Excellent. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, Hometown Heroes Presentation Town. Is there anyone there?
Yep.
You guys are next.
You can stay. You can, well, what's up? Hey, your slide.
You're sure?
Sure me.
Oh. Bear with us. We're doing strange share here.
While you're doing this, should we introduce ourselves?
Yep.
Starty.
Hi, I'm DeColte. Um, member of the board, the Green Mountain Hometown Heroes.
Yep.
I'm Shirley Adams. I'm Secretary of the Green Mountain Hometown Heroes Committee.
I'm Joe Bizan. I'm the President of the VFW Riders and am a member of the, uh, Green Mountain Hometown Heroes Board.
Well, and Shirley and I are members of the Bennington Legion Riders.
Give us a second. I think Hannah's going back to kick the server a couple of times.
The computer we're using for Zoom doesn't have PowerPoint, so she's got to get her regular computer.
Okay.
Take her a second.
We can talk if you want.
It's up to you. We.
I, I had just dropped it on a.
There we go.
So, Green Mountain Hometown Heroes, we have five board members at this time. We're a collaboration of the Post 13 Legion Riders, VFW 1332 Legion Riders. We just had our first thirty-seven banners installed in Bennington. If anyone has seen them, they're beautiful. We are, uh, incorporated with the Secretary, Secretary of State as of this year and we have applied for our final line fee.
Um, our purpose, the objective of the Green Mountain Hometown Heroes Corporation is to honor our local veterans living and deceased. And by obtaining customized banners, uh, to be displayed and pulled along, uh, the town-managed streets.
And we do have a banner, so.
This is just a demo banner. See it's on both sides.
Yep, yep.
You may recognize.
I recognize Bennington.
See it?
Is that the size that you used in Bennington?
This is one of the extra banners. Yep.
Yeah. Which you might notice is different than the ones you've seen in New York. New York tends to be a little bit bigger.
That's what I'm feeling. Pretty heavy duty.
Yeah, they are. We've had questions about how durable they are, so.
So.
Yeah, that looks quite durable.
Waranted for two years. So they are, um, warranted for two years by the manufacturer. But some of our guidelines are people who are eligible veterans living or deceased who were born or grew up, live in, and are associated would be with the town of Pownell. Service members who have been honorably discharged from any branch of the US military.
Interesting. Much more in it.
Yeah. So, um, we do have an application process. Uh, there's a two-page application applicants would fill out. There is a fee. It's one hundred and ninety dollars uh, for a banner that includes the banner installation hardware and a small administrative fee.
This is not a money-making operation for us. We, we try just to cover our costs.
Mm-hmm.
There's no, no fee for the town. Town occurs no, yep, no payment whatsoever.
Do you want Hannah to forward your slides?
Uh, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
So I don't.
Mike, you had a question?
I do. Who, who incurred the hundred and ninety-plus dollar fee?
Whoever chooses to sponsor the veteran, it could be a family member, it could be another organization. Um, whoever chooses to sponsor the veteran to be put on the banner.
And how many banners does that cover the cost of just one banner?
Correct.
Okay.
With the mounting hardware.
Yep, yep, okay. Who, who takes care of mounting the banner and determines the location?
We knew that was coming. That's what we've already done it back in. We asked, the only, that's the only way we ask for the town to do is have the town crew mount the banners, but you also have to speak with Green Mountain Power.
Right.
I'm sure you guys have done that before with Green Mountain Powers, talking about putting them up.
Yep.
You know what I mean?
Green Mountain Power, Power wanted the town to install them in Bennington. I'm assuming it will be the same here, so it's not really us making that decision.
Okay.
So basically, you're looking for permission from the town to move forward, to contact Green Mountain Power and to allow you to put them on our town roads.
Right.
It's from the select.
They're going to be town roads. It can't be state. And then we can discuss, I came up with a couple of ideas for different roads in the town. You want them to be seen. I mean, I think, you know, the Center Street down through here is good. Down in South Pownell will be a good street down by the church, Church Street and, uh, what is the other street there by, is it, uh?
Main Street.
Yeah, Main, Main there by the churches down through that way.
We can do Dean Road in North Pownell.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the, one of the, the tough one is North Pownell because there's not really a lot of paved or well-used dirt or well-used roads down there. So I'm thinking maybe even the background down to 346 over here, that's, that's a good road. I mean, that's well-traveled, so people can see them. And then, uh, I also come up with, uh, a North Pownell Center Street. Or not, sorry, not Center Street, but, um, Barber's Farm Road up here. North Pownell Dean's Road.
Dean Rock, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I would buy.
There's not a lot in North Pownell. That's one of the, you know, paved, traveled roads in North Pownell. It's not a state road.
That is actually a computer. You can.
If you guys are okay with that, that's fine.
She's so serious. You can go to the next slide.
Those are just details we can figure out later.
Right, exactly. That's, those are just some suggestions that I had because I.
Yeah.
Like I said, South Pownell, Church Street Center, this one out here, which would, I think would be a great place for them because we're right here with all the town. Um, all the way down through to the school. I would, yeah.
How do you get the, how do you get the word out so that people know they can apply for this as the board?
So we do have, we just, uh, created a Facebook page. We do have an email. None of us are, have given out our personal.
No, don't do that.
Don't do that.
So, um, and, and it's been working really well. We have a P.O. box. Um, we would like to do, um, most of our applications by email and we do understand there are people who do not use email or social medias. We are trying to come out. We are trying to come up with a way to deal with that.
Is there a minimum amount or a minimum amount that you would accept? Like if somebody, say you only get two people that wanna put up. You know, since we already have a relationship with the banner company, uh, if, if it were only two people, we'd go ahead and honor that. Right. Um, probably the maximum number is how many poles you all have in, on all that we can hang banners from. Because not every pole is, is, if a pole has something else on it, Green Mountain Power wouldn't want us to use that tool, so.
It's been well-received. I mean, put it this way, we're loading up the, the poles, whatever poles we can get, we're asking for more, we asked for more the other day in Bennington. Um, I think Pownell has quite a few veterans we don't realize.
Yeah.
You know, so we should be able to fill up some roads, I think.
And we hope to promote this through the, the VFW and Legion groups here in Pownell as well. I mean, the Riders group reads with them, rides with many of those folks, so we have contacts.
And that's why I was trying to figure out something close to the Legion too, to have these flags close to the Pownell Legion too. But the closest I could find would be that crossroad between uh, where the old school was there, uh, Oak Hill, Oak Hill, there you go. Um, Oak Hill Road, Oak Hill Road is another one, and the crossroad to it. Um, I guess that might be a, it's extension of Ladbrook, I don't know.
It is.
It is. So those, you know, those, those, those roads are.
And a lot of it would be nice if you put the banners of the veterans in the area that the veterans had lived in or living in.
Yeah, we, we had to, Carl, we had to, we had to kind of put a quash on that a little bit, I know, because what, especially with Bennington, we had so many veterans at once. They wanted to be put together, they wanted to be.
Okay.
It made, it made it a logistical nightmare, okay? Especially, because you get a, you get a, you get a rush, well, you know, next we're going to Reeveboro and North Bennington and Chassbury.
Yep.
So we're going through all these, so I, I figured Pownell would want, would want in on this, because I think they're really cool. I, myself, you know.
There is um, an instruction sheet that goes with the application that explains. It gives our email address, our PO box, where they would mail their digital photos to.
Will you be able to um, get the application from your Facebook page?
I don't have that uploaded yet. I am working on it. It will be, yeah, I'm working on it.
Email's on there, something around, that's, that's one that I was gonna do for my, for my.
Actually, I have an extra copy of some of them. Keep one too.
Actually, all we.
It's got the email read on it, Carl, with him.
Would you mind if you've got a blank one? Tara, I'm gonna ask, take a scan of that, or whatever, however we wanna do it.
Mm-hmm.
And post it on our website?
Yeah, and I was, I was gonna say, I'll keep hard copies here in case people wanna come in, I can help them fill it out and.
That actually goes back.
Through email to you guys.
You guys, back to you.
No, that one's not a blank one, that's, that's got the number.
Oh, oh, it's just.
Here's a, here's a, here's a.
I think we have one.
I mean, I can make lots of copies.
So what we're trying to um, not have to do up until last week, Shirley and I are running around to the VFW, to the American Legion, to the PO box, uh, trying to meet with people, um, especially people who don't have email addresses, because we will not order a banner unless the sponsor can confirm, yep, this information is correct and that picture is the right picture. So that's been difficult.
And then we turn around and then we confirm that it's up, because lord, we don't want a.
No, you don't want a problem.
So I met with a veteran this afternoon at the VFW. I didn't have the correct picture with me because I went, I was given an incorrect picture. I followed him home to his house and went in and took a picture for his banner for him. He has no email address, so we, we, we try to help them. We, we want to honor them. They, they just.
They could send all the information in email, and then the check to pay for it to be sent to the PO box, is that how you wanna do it?
Yep, and that's right on, it should be on the instruction sheet, our PO box.
Once you set up your five oh one sheet.
So basically, basically what you're looking for is you're looking for the town of Pownell's blessing to go ahead and move forward with this. With this, doing right, Joe?
Contact, contact, yes, contact Green Mountain Power, say you wanna do something Bennington did. Mount it, come out the poles, make sure you get the permission, everything for whatever poles we're talking about. You guys confirmed those roads that we're talking about, I think that's pretty easy. Everybody kind of agrees with that, what roads there. Um, and then contact Green Mountain Power and then have your road crew to put them up. I mean, that's basically what it is.
To re-contact the electric company.
You guys, you guys, well, whoever your road crew person is or, that might be easier for your road crew guy.
They won't talk to me anymore.
And we try to give them access to make.
Permission for you guys to, to uh, have your road crew guys mount.
Sounds great to me.
Becomes an issue.
What's the board's position?
Um, I make a motion that uh, we move forward with, with the Hometown Hero Program.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh, oh, Carl Strohmeier, aye.
Angie Rawling, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
My guardian, aye. So we'll move forward with that, Joe, and I apologize, I, I don't remember anyone else's name and, um, we'll move forward with this then.
Alright, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Hey, no problem. Thank you.
So just, just kind of an administrative thing, the contact would be.
Tara.
Tara, okay.
And I'll, I'll email you tomorrow.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all wanna leave?
They're going, they're going home, be.
Either way you want, it's fine.
Well, either way, either way. Take care. No problem.
I'm gonna take a break.
Williams, Williams College Consulting Group.
No.
There you go.
Uh, the Williams College, uh, Consulting Group Discussion?
What's that? We're just, everybody's leaving, Mike.
Yep, yep, I can see that.
No, no, you're, we don't want you to leave, no, 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 no. Everybody else here has left.
Okay, alright. We're good now, Mike, go ahead.
Williams College, a consulting group discussion and possible action.
Okay, um, not a lot to discuss. Um, Scott Grumline's BRCRC came across a consultation group. They provide free consultation from, um, they're out of Williams College. They're business students uh, from Williams College, and it's a free service. I have not looked into it at all, I just wanted your blessing to look into it for the transfer station.
And that is, that's, okay, yes.
They do like municipal studies, um, feasibility studies, that kind of stuff.
Could I make an ask? And make that talk, but, but I also would like to know if they could provide us any other type of service. Such as um, I had just been discussing about, I have, I have, I have issues with, we're gonna have manpower issues coming down the road. And I, and I don't know if they might be ones to help us to, I don't know if a study, to study us, to see if there's any place that we can improve. Uh, because, think about it, how many people on the road department are within five years of retirement?
Leave that, she said feasibility study.
Or the transfer station.
Yes.
But I, my thought was, was see what they are. Do it for the transfer station, but ask if there's anything else that we can.
Rod, Rod must go.
Rod must go, that's awesome.
The rest of the town, okay.
I'm all for checking it out and looking into it and seeing what they can offer.
And I'll come back before I.
Yeah.
Before we commit to any, I'm starting back what it is exactly.
Yeah, because they're probably gonna bring in and ask if this is, they'll have some suggestions of those folk that we want.
And I also don't know if it's um, a certain time of year or a certain semester that they dedicate to this stuff, or if it's all year round, or I don't know any of the details, just was looking for, for basically your blessing before I move ahead.
I think we should look into it, Tara, and see where it goes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Uh, are for discussion updates and possible allocations?
So we all have my update, um, what was already allocated and what is remaining. We have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-eight cents remaining to be allocated. I of course had my suggestions based on talking to Joel and a few other things. Um, the main request I have is that we purchase a side-by-side for emergency services. Currently, our volunteer services use their personal vehicles. And if something happens, they're out, they're side-by-side that they've paid a lot of money for, and I don't think that's right. I'm also concerned because we have new access to a large forest area. Um, we're gonna have more hikers and more access to this very big piece of land. And getting up there is not gonna be easy if there's an emergency. And we're talking all kinds of emergencies, from someone being hurt to fires. Um, and the fifty thousand that I'm requesting, I've worked with Craig to come up with quotes, and that will purchase the side-by-side as well as equip it for fire and rescue. And it will be available to both fire departments as well as the rescue department.
So it also said trailer and equipment in gear, um.
Right, you put the new, new story, it was in the trailer, and then the gear is actually a insert that goes onto the back, in places like the standard bed. And it has some uh, pumps like Meridian tanks, and then a stoves area for carrying.
I think, Jimmy, I think, I think we're jumping to conclusions on what, what it's gonna have equipped, right?
Well, no, just giving her an idea of what they're built.
That's what's in general. So I think before, before we allocate any money to, to a side-by-side, and I'm not opposed to it, I think it's a great idea. I do think we need to, to look into what it has for equipment on it. And there's a whole bunch of things that go along with this, right? Where is it gonna be stored? Who's gonna be in charge of maintenance? Is the town gonna be responsible for maintenance? Or, or, uh, the rescue squad, or the fire departments, or where is all that gonna come from? Um, I think before we allocate the money for that, there's, there's a few things which just need to be ironed out before we move forward, right? Is it, is it gonna have, is it gonna have rescue equipment, is it gonna have uh, rescue equipment and firefighting equipment, is it gonna be, where is, where is, where is the trailer gonna be housed, is it gonna be housed at the town office, or the town garage, or whatever? So I think there's, I think there's a few things we need to look into.
I, it will be stored at the, um, where Craig would have access to it. Craig is the emergency airport, emergency management coordinator, would decide where it will best be stored and how everyone can access it. He would also help me decide what equipment goes on it. That is not up for us to decide.
I did have one other question though, why a side-by-side and not a four-wheeler?
Uh, because side-by-side can carry more people as well, as well as equipment. And it can bring a patient out.
Okay, so Craig is doing this on his, I shouldn't say authority, but his position as emergency coordinator for the town of Pownell. This isn't coming from the fire department, it's coming from the emergency coordinator for the town of Pownell.
And me, because we've added.
Correct.
The risk to the town. Um, as far as storing it, would be stored there, but I do need to check on insurance. Um, because I don't know if the town, if the town owns it and we insure it, I'm not sure our insurance carrier will let us store it there and have it used for fire, so it may need to go on one of their policies, but that.
That's something that I see.
Yeah, I can look into um, over the next couple of weeks.
I, I'd like to look into that a little bit more, Tara, and bring that back to our next regular meeting. Just to, just to iron everything all out here. I just think there's a few things we just need to iron out.
Okay. But no, that's what's gonna happen, Mike.
Is that just insurance you want me to iron out, or what else do you want me to figure out?
So, so we need to figure out the insurance, right? We need to figure that out. We need to figure out who's gonna maintain it. If it's a town-owned machine, um, that, you know, it's not, it's not a fire department-owned machine, right? It's a town-owned machine, so who's gonna be doing the maintenance on it? Because, um, you know, and Craig, God forbid, Craig's not the emergency management coordinator anymore, you know, next year. And the emergency management coordinator is, i- i- it's somebody totally, you know what I mean? It's this whole, there's a, there's a few things I think we just need to iron out um, before we just say, okay, we're gonna spend fifty grand here on this and be done with it.
Okay.
And I can, I can get with you. I should be a little more mobile next week. Um, right now, right now, I'm not very mobile.
I think I can, I think I can handle the insurance calls and whatever.
Right, and we just, you know, we just need to know who's, we just need to iron out who's in charge of maintenance and, um, you know, uh, uh, all, you know, because if the town owns it, like I said, are we responsible for the maintenance? Or is, is the rescue squad in charge of maintenance, or the fire department in charge of maintenance? Who's, who will be in charge of maintaining? If it's a, and, and I'm, I, I'm totally for this, I just think we need to iron out, um, I think we need to iron out a few things just to make sure we do it the right way.
Okay.
Right.
Um, what do we think about the other suggested uses? I don't think the public really knows what we're looking at, so the other ideas were parking lot paving.
And that's behind here.
The back parking lot and the roadway out.
That was my other question.
Emergency.
Emergency road.
Out here, and that, that pricing I got from Joel.
Right.
Um, and then the stair casing is just like a generalized amount, because I know that you all were interested in having stairs put in.
Some of the, just so people understand that are out there from the road down the bank to the town office.
Yes.
For when they park up there, that they can walk down the stairs.
So when we have the back ramps done, Hannah's gonna see if they have the capability of doing that, or if we have to get it engineer-designed. Um, which could affect the cost, obviously. Uh, but this can just be an initial discussion and we can come back with.
Yeah, let's go back on that.
Um, who, the compactor for the transfer station?
I know, I wanna talk about that for a minute. Um, Joel and I went down to Williamstown, we were invited down, um, by the town of Williamstown to look at their transfer station and, and things that they run. Um, and how, how they run their, their transfer station. And we've been talking about trying to, um, make our transfer station run more efficiently. They just installed, um, refurbished compactor down there for around thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and I, I think it's a huge, I think it's an opportunity for us to, um, I think it's an opportunity for the select board right now to work on making this transfer station much more efficient. They saved, um, they saved approximately ninety-six hundred dollars, um, on their first year with that, with that compactor, because they're paying the same as us, they pay a hauling fee every time someone backs into a dumpster. Whether that dumpster takes out one ton or nine tons. With the compactor, they're taking out, out of the cardboard and paper alone, they're taking out an average of nine ton versus, versus a ton or a ton and a half every, every time. Um, my idea, and I think this is where, where the consulting firm, I guess, would maybe come in, I don't even know if we need them to do this. We could probably do it on our own. Carl's been working on this. I, I noticed some of the emails, Carl, with um, asking Tom back and forth. My ideas are, we, we get a compactor for our cardboard and our paper products. We get a compactor for our plastic and glass. We separate out our tin cans, they go into the metal. Um, this is basically what Williamstown's doing. Then we can put our demolition debris undercover in our tipping shed, so that we're not paying for water weight on insulation and, and sheetrock and whatever else. It's, it's undercover, we're not, we're not paying for water weight, because we pay by the ton. Um, and Carl, jump in anytime, we're paying by the ton for, um, getting rid of, getting rid of our construction debris.
Correct. As of right now, my calculations, the numbers I got from Tom for our construction debris, is our construction debris is a net positive on.
Yep.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go, go ahead. I saw that.
Our, our construction debris is a net positive, um, go- going in and coming out. Uh, the trash, I had to do some calculations because Tom can't get me the September figures. This is only for the month of September. Because that's the, that's the, uh, um, uh, but my figures say that uh, the trash may end up being, the trash maybe end up being barely a net positive. But, um, where we lose the money is on our recyclables and that is on the transportation side. Because you figure if we're shipping out one ton of recyclables per load at two hundred and twelve dollars. Um, if you times that by eight, that will be the savings for um, one of our, um, classes of recyclables. So.
I, I mean, I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see two compactors come in. Um, put them on a cement pad and and redo our transfer station. I've got some ideas, but I think it's um, it needs, it needs sort of a.
Why don't we go with three?
Well.
I mean, I mean, the, the, the bottom line is, Mike, if we've got three things that we're dumping garbage, we're still gonna end up. All right, I believe unless you're figuring that with the cans will generate money from the metal perspective.
Well, I don't know if it's gonna generate any money, Kyle, but it won't cost us to get rid of them, right?
But I think we should look into another uh, option as far as recycling the tin and the metal anyways. I've been doing a little more on that. I just haven't narrowed down all the numbers, but definitely better than what, um, we're presently getting.
Maybe we should bring this back for the next regular to the transfer station some more. Because I was gonna suggest that we put twenty thousand uh, towards a compactor and then Tom has equipment fund money. So he may have enough to do one or two or three or, I don't know, but maybe involving him and the conversation and.
He should definitely be involved.
Has and have more of a.
Mike, did Tom go with you down to?
Tom, Tom was there. Yep.
Okay, because I just heard you say Joel and I was a little worried.
No, Tom, Tom was invited as well. I ma- I made sure Tom was invited.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, did you get it, did you get from them down there what the cost was? Their cost for the compactor?
It was thirteen thousand, but it was used.
It was a used refurbished compactor. It was thirteen thousand dollars.
And is that compactor and container?
They use Casella right now, Casella.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Cas- Casella supplies the container. So they, uh, there's no cost for a container.
Okay.
Those are standard drop and pickup fees. As far as that goes.
Standard like we're paying right now?
Yes. I guess that's a question to confirm.
Okay, then done. So I put twenty thousand towards highway because Joel didn't get a lot of the ARPA money. And he will have eighty thousand to pay off on the truck this year. Um, and then the rest towards the cemetery fund. But I can bring it all back.
I, Tara, I, I really like the way you have it built down here, um. I, I, you know, I, I think it's great. I, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the fifty thousand. I just think we need to iron out a few things rather than have here and then try to iron out. Um, the compactor, all of that stuff, I think is, you know, and I think you're right. I, 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 this is a discussion. I think we need to bring the transfer station person on the back at the next regular board meeting. Um, bring Tom in, um, and and move forward with this transfer station to try to save, um, to try to save money. Williamson used, um, um, eighty percent of their budget last fiscal year. They didn't use a hundred percent of their budget, so. Um, not that, not that I'm trying to be like Williamson, that's not it at all. I'm just trying to be more efficient with what we're doing. And I think that's, I think this is a way, Kyle and I have discussed this a little tiny bit. I think this is a way to, um, I think it's a way to, to bring it into, bring it into, uh, a little better balance.
I, I think, uh, it's not about being like anybody else. It's about, like you say, upgrading our facility and by visiting other facilities where we get to learn what's working, what's not working.
Right, so.
And that's, it's good information.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
In that discussion that we have for the transfer station, I'd like to have a discussion amongst us, the board members on exactly how we want Tom to give us a monthly report. Um, the comings and goings, or not the coms, basically what he's got coming in and what's going out. I'd like that on a monthly basis. I don't believe there's any reason why he shouldn't be giving us exactly what we're generating per class of material and what it's costing us to ship that material out.
I think that's, I think that's totally fair.
And I think that, that, I think the, we as a board need to have a discussion on that and then inform Tom exactly what we're requesting of him.
Well, we'll put that on next, um, regular meeting, Tara.
Yep.
Perfect. Is that all right, Kyle? Next, well, you know.
That's perfect. I'm okay with that as long as we just move forward with that because I don't think that we're getting reports that we can, that are actionable reports to work with.
No, I think you do, I think you do, I think it could be a little more timely. So, you know, anything else on the ARPA discussion? I think we're in good shape.
Well, I think we did our and trash at the same time, so.
Yeah, no, we'll bring it back and those are just, just food for thought on the.
Yep.
On the suggested uses for the rest or allocations, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, no, I think, and I think they're great. I, I, I think they're, I think they need just a little bit more discussion and you know, I don't like to do that, but I think they just need a little bit more and, you know, move forward, but I think it's, I think it's great. Anything else on ARPA discussion?
Nope.
No. Call off the flag, poll discussion and possible action. Everybody got the bids for that?
Yep.
There's two bids.
Four thousand and thirty-six sixty.
And then there's, I actually got a third one today for four thousand for twenty-five foot. And I have the money, um, in the town office ARPA allocated.
I prefer thirty foot.
You prefer thirty?
I prefer thirty. I, I'd prefer a hundred if we could do it, but I'm, just because I'm, I'm that kind of guy.
Correct.
And the giraffe reflects real expensive and we need two of them.
I know, I know, it would become overly expensive, but I would rather have a thirty foot bowl.
I'm paying for a hundred.
Yeah, that would be kind of girish, I know.
Anybody, anybody have any preference, I don't even follow on the, on the height?
A standard is what, twenty-five, right?
Basically, they're, oh, God, they're all, they're all over the place.
Size out here, do we know?
I think it's twenty-five.
Are you doing, do you believe it's thirty?
Yeah.
So the thirty was four to three hundred.
And what was the, what was the twenty-five?
Thirty-six, six oh nine or four thousand.
So six hundred dollars more for.
Yes, yeah, about sixty-four hundred bucks more for thirty-four versus a twenty-five.
Did that happen to include a lighting kit?
Um, I don't believe it does, but I think we can purchase, um, that there's solar powered ones that you attach to the top. Um, I was gonna suggest we do that anyways, if it's not included.
And I'm not wed to the thirty foot if everybody else wants a twenty-five.
Well, you're planning on putting it out here and for the, between the
Tree and the building.
Between the building height, the church heights, it'd be a nice contrast.
Yeah.
Thirty.
I would need a motion for thirty foot flag pole installed from, uh, flag poles, et cetera.
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Carl Strowmeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye, and I, I voted out of all.
I did.
That's fine.
Yep, all right, so we'll get that order up there and we're good to go?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, laptop purchase discussion and possible action?
So I basically just need your blessing to order two laptops. Hannah started to act up and mind us here and there, so. Um, if they crap out on us, we have no backup, no backup.
So my question is, it's twenty-four seventy, eighty-four for both, correct?
Yes.
And how long do you think they will last?
It's like, these ones are old. These are like six years.
Okay.
Use them, the suggested lines are like three to five years.
Three to five years.
Pass out. That was my only question.
Any credit for the ones you had?
No, he said to just keep them around.
Or can we possibly get them upgraded for spares?
We could, yeah, I mean, we could have them do a.
You're gonna continue using yours, right?
Yeah.
And I think I'm gonna continue using mine as well, because mine acts up and it won't, the mousepad won't work. But then
That's right.
That was working again, so like, it's good to have them just in case they're.
Because sometimes it.
We only have laptops.
And the turnaround on these can be weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Because I have to get approval from you guys and then order them and then sometimes, so I'd rather just have them.
You should definitely have a backup.
We haven't ordered computers. I mean, we ordered one for Joel year before last.
Certainly after we moved in here.
Whether, whether those are your backup or whether the new ones are your backup, it doesn't matter. You're gonna have the IT people sync the.
Yeah.
So everything that's on your computer will be on the new computer. So.
Yep.
I want to turn a motion to purchase two new laptops for Hannah and Tara.
I'll second that.
Uh.
Or I'll make a motion.
Make. Can I amend the mo- have a motion of, well, sorry. Motion amended that we purchase the two new laptops and then have these two laptops refurbished or upgraded.
At some point.
At some point.
Uh, yeah, I don't think that has to be in the motion because it's our IT people to.
Okay, I didn't know.
That's not.
Send out for it, that's all.
But too cheap.
So I'll mention on the floor, you purchased two new laptops at twenty-four hundred and seventy dollars. I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Carl Strowmeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Okay, uh, town office cleaning and maintenance discussion and possible action?
So now that Bill isn't here, I kinda had to divvy up his duties. Hannah's taken on some of the safety, building safety checklist stuff, uh, fire extinguishers, AED. Um, we obviously need a contract cleaner um, for a large portion of what he was doing. Um, so I did it under a contract format because it's just easier and then
Uh-huh.
This can be given to different companies that we call for estimates. If you give me the blessing to go for estimates, rather go for, rather than go for an R F.
Yeah, I'd rather have estimates. Because we could, if, if, if none of the estimates work, then we can go with the bidding process.
Do, right, we can do something else, but, um, you know, I'll call three to five. I'll get three to five estimates and then go from there. But in the meantime, obviously, we need cleaning and Ellen has been cleaning. Um, so I was hoping that you would approve me just paying her twenty dollars an hour for a couple hours a week, that she does that. Otherwise, our bathrooms are gonna be dirty and floors unswept. I mean, she's been doing it already, so I just feel like she should be paid for it because it's not really her job.
Yeah, you should be compensated for doing the job that.
Right.
And it won't affect her muni or anything like that. It's just a temporary fill-in for a few weeks until we can get a company in here.
So what did you pick up? You said that you picked up some of Bill's too.
No, I gave them to Hannah.
Oh, you gave them all? I, that was one of my questions, is why you had to pick up?
No, I didn't. Um, and then we're gonna call the company, we're gonna contract out like the filter changes. Um, on the furnace downstairs and the water filters. Um, and then any thing that we need, like maintenance-wise, we'll have to probably contract out if not.
Do it. For your filters, you want to include your HVAC because those have filters in them also.
Yep.
And if it's easy enough to do, I don't mind changing the filters when Fort Kent State comes, if they can show me how to do it. Because Bill was, Sarah was ordering them and then Bill was doing it.
I can show you how to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be.
I, I, I also, Tara, wanna know if we, if this adds um, to Hannah's, what she's doing now, should we increase her? You know, if we're, if Ellen's cleaning the toilets and picking up the pieces and Hannah's picking up the pieces, let's pay Hannah a portion too.
Uh, I don't know if it really is adding to Hannah's, she can do it while she's here. It's a little bit different. I mean, do you feel like you want to be paid more for? I mean, I don't know how you would do that unless you're talking about increasing her hourly pay.
Oh, because she's a paid employee on an hour. How would you turn around and do that? From, would you give her, would you just add an hour to her work day? Uh, how would you do that, Mike?
Well, I don't know. I mean, you know, she's, I don't think she has to check the fire extinguishers every day.
Doesn't even have to check them. She just has to contact the company to come and do.
Right, so.
And that's.
Here every six years, every six months, which she was actually doing anyways when Bill was here.
Oh, okay. All right, I just, I just.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Golden ticket.
We're talking for the board's president for Ellen.
Do you wanna do a maximum hour of hours or?
You know approximately how many hours it takes her to do.
It's probably like, um, I mean, it is a big place, but.
So many.
Couple hours a week.
She only does the bathrooms, just go downstairs too and do that?
I mean, we will if we ask her to, yeah.
But is that what Bill was doing? He was doing downstairs too?
Yeah, so she has to do what Bill does, so.
So two hours a week, do you think?
That's what I, that's.
Yeah, that's probably enough. And we have the, um, we have Bill's salary, so they can come out of that line.
Okay. I make a motion that we pay Ellen for two hours a week for cleaning the facility on a temporary basis until we can find a contracted service.
Second that.
Correct.
What, are you paying her the period of twenty dollars an hour as Sarah suggested?
Yeah, that's my suggestion, twenty dollars an hour.
Two hours a week?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor and a second for two hours a week, twenty dollars an hour for Ellen for cleaning.
Yeah, only thing I would say is, is if it ends up being, takes to her three hours.
Then she needs to come to Karen.
That's exactly all, it's all I wanted to get out of everybody.
Okay.
Right. So.
Right, she can bring it back, that's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, Charles Strowmeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Uh, B C R C mapping service estimate discussion and action, possible action?
Okay, so for the forest land, um, we have lots of moving pieces, so to speak. Lots of people collecting inventory and public outreach and lots of um, sort of research being done on the land and, um, different, you know, historical markers are found or streamways or elevation or all these different pieces. And we have like fifty different maps that have all these pieces on it. B C R C is going to help us figure out how to use their mapping system to make a layered map. Um, G I S data that has every single piece of inventory that we're collecting. Um, it will include trails, it will include, um, forest tree stands. It will include, I mean, anything you can think of, we're gonna put into this map. And it's the same mapping system that Tessa McGann uses, who is our county forester. Um, so this is a real collaboration between all of our, um, entities.
And that, and that data will be put on there too.
Yes, so all of that data, any of the data that we are collecting will be included in this map. And it will be reimbursed by Forak, the Forak grant because it will produce the maps that we said we are going to. Um, so she gave us a quote of twenty-five hundred, not to exceed twenty-five hundred, which is great. I mean, she's already come down and met with me and Nate about it, um, and really sort of took a jump on it already without the approval, just to say like, this is what we can offer, the scope of service, um, as part of their continuum of care, so. Um, I'm excited to get started with us, hopefully you guys.
Need a blessing or a motion?
A motion would be great.
Make a motion to, for B C R C's mapping not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Carl Strowmeyer, aye.
Sorry.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Fucking Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Uh, B C R C requests to use the space for Center Street residents, open house?
Um, Hannah, what was that date again?
So it's November nineteenth, um, they're gonna be here for the planning meeting at six P M to go over the results of their, um, N P G study, which is for Center Street improvements that they've been working on. They just wanna do like a open house reception kind of for the. They just wanna do like a open house reception kind of for the um, center street residents because. Um, they're the ones directly affected, they just wanna open up the space so that they can go over the results with them before the meeting. Um, so it'll be like an hour and I will be here, I can open the building for them.
You're saying November or December?
November nineteenth, that will be at five P M and then the planning meeting is at six P M.
Thank you.
What's your project?
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the request from B C R C to utilize the town space.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Carl Strowmeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye. Um, what's lead just in the public comment? We have any public comment here now?
No hands up.
No hands up?
Nope.
You can motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Carl Strowmeyer, aye.
Angie Rollin, aye.
Jamie Percy, aye.
Mike Gardner, aye, and I'll be there in person next time, I'm sure.
You're up.
Thank you, everyone for attending tonight.
Hey, all right, take care.